Where we will discuss our comprehensive plan amendments for 2024. In lieu of an invocation, we will start off with the moment of silence. Would like for us to take some time to remember our recently passed county manager, David Hankerson, as well as remember those in our lives who may be in need of our thoughtfulness towards this time. After the moment of silence, that'll be followed by the pledge, and then we'll get into today's hearing. Again, please join me for a moment of silence. We'll now rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and our meeting is now called to order. I believe we have Philip Westbrook, who'll be walking us through today's agenda as we discuss the various plan amendments to our comprehensive plan this morning. For those of you who have specific comprehensive plan amendments that you would like to speak to, this hearing will be run very similar to our zoning hearing with opportunity for you to weigh in once your matter is called. With that, Philip, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you all for being here. I know this was your Tuesday off from public meetings, so I sincerely appreciate you all being here for this task that we've got before us, our annual amendment process. I am Philip Westbrook, Senior Planner with Cobb County Community Development, and I am here to facilitate the 2024 comprehensive plan amendments. Just a little bit of background, the Georgia Planning Act of 1989 established comprehensive planning activities for all jurisdictions within the state. As part of those activities, we have, they have a creation manual as well as an update schedule or a maintenance schedule. We are part of that maintenance schedule right now where they do five, 10-year updates, but they also have optional annual updates, which Cobb County has customarily done over the past several decades, to be honest with you. And that is what we are here for today, these minor changes to the future land use and usually minor changes to the comprehensive plan as far as additions, revisions to our small area policy guidelines. Just a word of note, this is a comprehensive plan. It is a guideline for future development. It is by no means impacts the zoning of the property. It does not change the zoning of the property. That is up to the property owner or a representative thereof. It is not a development ordinance. It is strictly a guideline for future development, moving into the future. It's sort of, it's a tool in a large toolbox that helps you all, the elected officials, make smart land use decisions moving forward out into the future. Today, we have three different comprehensive plan changes or types of amendments. We have zoning decisions, also known as ZDs. These are passed, over the past year, as we've gone through rezoning cases, ever so often there is a zoning that is approved that is incompatible with our future land use. That's okay. It's really okay, but we, for consistency reasons, we like for the future land use to be compatible with that zoning, so we come up on this annual update and we do zoning decisions. We have seven of them. Those are the ZDs. We have commission proposals. Commission proposals are brought down from the commissioners and/or the constituents of the commissioner. We, as a plan division, take a look at those and justify a means for them to make the amendment package, which is, the CPs that we have here today have undergone that vetted process and have been, or will be before you for proposed change. And then we have a staff proposal, which is one, this is a proposal that comes from staff, and we're looking to add a economic development strategic plan to the community work program. It's just, basically, our community work program is a five-year implementation plan. That project was not part of our original five-year work program, so we're adding that now that our economic development department is up and running and they're establishing a strategic plan. So, those are the type amendments. Let's see, oh, one last thing. We're almost ready to get started, but I believe, Chairwoman, if I may, just let the audience know how the meeting will proceed. I know this is an annual meeting for you all, so it's easy to forget, and I have to review it every year myself. But I think the best way to go about this would be to, what I'll do is I'll read all the zoning decisions first. After I read each one, you, the chair, will ask the audience if there's a speaker that wants to speak for or against, and then if there is, we'll just set it off to the side. And then after we read all the zoning decision cases, the ones that did not have opposition or speakers, you can vote on those in a lump, kind of a consent agenda type. And then the ones that did have speakers are opposition. We'll reread those back into the record and then have those speakers come up and speak, and I believe they have three minutes. I believe that's the case, so. And we'll run through the zoning decisions that way, and then we'll move into the commission proposals doing the same thing. And then fortunately, there's only one SP, so that'll be easy.
Very good. Thank you.
So with that, I think we'll be ready to get started.
Whenever you're ready.
And we're going to start with the ZDs, and I'm going to briefly do an introduction to the ZD and then provide you with the planning commission recommendation. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
May I enter?
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Burl is going to hand the clerk a statement to proceed her votes for today.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, and I'd like the clerk to record my statement as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll start with ZD1. ZD1 is based on zoning case Z49 from November of 2022. It is in Commission District 4. The existing future land use is low-density residential and medium-density residential. The proposed future land use is medium-density residential. The site is located on the west side of Ernest Barrett Parkway at the terminus of Old Horseshoe Bend, north of Macedonia Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak for or against this matter? Okay, thank you.
All right. ZD2 is based on zoning case Z86, which was approved in December of 2022. It is in Commission District 3. The existing future land use is industrial compatible, and the proposed future land use is industrial. The site is located on the north side of Gresham Road, east of Fairview Street. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you, Philip. Again, is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak for or against ZD2? All right, seeing none, can continue.
ZD3 is based on Z77 from 2022, which was approved in February of 2023. It is in Commission District 3. The existing future land use is community activity center and neighborhood activity center. The proposed future land use is community activity center. The site is located on the south side of Piedmont Road and on the west side of Canton Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak towards this matter? Okay, we can go on.
ZD4 is based on Z21, which was approved in July of 2023. It is in Commission District 4. The existing future land use is community activity center, and the proposed future land use is neighborhood activity center and low-density residential. The site is located on the west side of Ostel Powder Springs Road, north of Clay Road, and across from Eugenia Place. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this matter? Okay.
All right. ZD5 is based on Z27 from August 2023. It is in Commission District 4. The existing future land use is community activity center and low-density residential. The proposed future land use is neighborhood activity center. The track is located on the west side of Queen Mill Road and on the north side of Mableton Parkway. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here for ZD5 who would like to speak towards this? Okay.
ZD6 is based on Z29 from September of 2023. It is in Commission District 4. The existing future land use is very-low-density residential. The proposed future land use is low-density residential. The site is located on the north side of Morris Road, west of Lithia Springs Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak for or against ZD6? Okay.
ZD7 is based on Z72 from October of 2021. It is in Commission District 2. The existing future land use is neighborhood activity center and low-density residential. The proposed future land use is public institutional, park, recreation, conservation, medium-density residential, and low-density residential. The site is located on the south of Shallowford Road, west of Johnson Ferry Road, northerly and southerly of Waterfront Drive. The planning commission, the planning commission recommendation is for approval and to eliminate small area policy guideline NAC-P9 that would actually be no longer valid with this change.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak for or against ZD7? Okay, we have one speaker. Go ahead. All right, so we'll, go ahead and poll this. We will vote on the other matters in bank or as part of a consent agenda.
Perfect.
Okay. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve zoning decision comprehensive plan amendments 1 through 6.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and then we'll now have a hearing for ZD7.
All right, I'll reread it back in the case and back in the record. ZD7 is based on Z72 from October of 2021. It is in Commission District 2. The existing future land use is neighborhood activity center and low-density residential. The proposed future land use is public institutional, park, recreation, conservation, medium-density residential, and low-density residential. The site is located south of Shallowford Road, west of Johnson Ferry Road, northerly and southerly of Waterfront Drive. The planning commission recommendation is for approval and to eliminate small area policy guideline NAC-P9.
Okay, those who would like to speak towards this may please approach. For our county managers, do they have five minutes to speak? Three? Thank you.
Three.
Look, this is our Monday morning. It is all good. All right, the time will be there at the dais, and you may begin, and just let us know your name.
Okay, yes, I'm Alicia Adams, and I just have a question. When we were in an age of, we're so concerned about being overcrowded and too much, too much, everybody's saying too much traffic, and yet we're going from low-density housing up to medium-density, mixed community, and I'm just wondering why? Now, understand, this is my first time hearing and seeing any of the plans, so I didn't say anything before, but why are we going from low-density housing to medium and mixed everywhere? I'm not understanding why that, that we're expanding. We've got a lot of parks in the area. We've got a lot of activities. Every time we have a commissioners' meeting, you share all these great activities that are going on in your commission districts. So why are we adding even more? I love kids, I love playing, I'm a playful adult, but at the same time, why are we changing from low-density housing? Why is low-density housing not on your radar? We're going medium to high-density all over the place. Why is that? Do we not want houses anymore? Do we want people to be in apartments? Do we want people to be clustered all over the place? Because most of us moved here. We didn't want the high-density of DeKalb. We didn't want the high-density of Fulton County. We liked the little bit more casual pace that we have in Cobb County. Stop decabinating Cobb. Stop Fultonizing Cobb. We like our community. We want to grow, and we want to move forward, but if we're really going to be about transit, if we're going to really be about being the place to live, work, and play, why are we grossly, why are we on such an aggressive expansion effort? So, thank you, but I, we seriously need to relook at this because every single one of those points was much growth. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to ZD7? Phil, I'm going to have you help clarify why we are here with respect to ZD7 and a little bit of history, and then I will further address comments you made.
All right, so this, this particular case actually started out well before we are here today. Several years ago, we undertook a small area plan, also called JOSH, or the Johnson Ferry-Shallowford Small Area Plan. It was a very well-attended community engagement project that looked at, mainly this area was the focus area, but we also looked at the entire intersection of Johnson Ferry and Shallowford Road. And what came out of that meeting, or that project, was looking at land use changes that changed the Neighborhood Activity Center that you see right here, which is a commercial future land use. It allows for commercial development and to provide more housing. There's actually even a park on the property, or will be a park on the property, and then it just so happened that there was a church that bought the northern end of the, of the project. That was a zoning case that came up several years ago, and we are looking at changing the future land use to sort of match what the zoning on that property will be. And that's, all these zoning decisions are that way, so.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, the votes that we have today are making our plan consistent with what has already been zoned. So that zoning decision has occurred in the past. Our future land use map accommodated two zoning categories, which was the Neighborhood Activity Center and Low Density Residential. This also includes Low Density Residential, Medium Density Residential, a park for public institutional, and I'm forgetting PRC, Planned Residential Community, I believe.
But it's Park Recreation.
Park Recreation. Or Public Institutional is for the church, not for the park. With respect to some comments about Fultonizing or decabinating Cobb County, there are mixed zoning uses throughout the metro area, also in Fulton and also in DeKalb County. They also have Low Density Residential, Medium Density Residential, and areas that are similar in characteristic in Cobb that are of higher density. So I would appreciate us not making those type of broad comments, which really slant a conversation and make it difficult to hear the veracity of concerns with respect to the item at hand. And I think it puts our neighbors that we work in concert with to make the Atlanta region a great place. It makes them seem as if we are an adversary, and we are trying to make metro Atlanta, Cobb County, and our individual counties the best place that they can be.
Philip, on the map for ZD7, the outlined area is currently a NAC, and then is that little gray square at the bottom right-hand corner, the LDR that's included?
Correct.
Just let me finish. So, that's the only LDR piece, and that's staying LDR down at the bottom. And this is just matching what was approved at zoning for this parcel.
Correct.
And the MDR are townhomes, not apartments.
Correct.
So, they're keeping the LDR that was identified initially before the zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
And just to clarify as well, the LDR was definitely maintained there for transitional purposes. The residential plan and the small area plan that was crafted included an RE5 component, which is what came before us for zoning with variances, hence they're a little bit closer together than normal, but they are still, it's still within that category with the variances there. And then the townhomes, they are, they are single-detached homes. So that is what is going in that location, just for clarification's sake. So you've got some commercial, you've got the public institutional, the park component, and then single-family detached in order to accommodate, and then also some major intersection improvements in order to deal with some long-seated traffic issues and concerns related to that corridor. I know there's still a lot more work to be done on that, but for this particular amendment, it is to be consistent with that update. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl?
Also, Philip, we did have recommendations from East Cobb Civic Association and to remove the small area note on NAC-P9, which is this particular location parcel, and that was recommended for approval to remove those by planning.
No, the only recommendation from the planning was to...
NAC-P9, that's the one we're removing.
Yeah, 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 NAC-P9.
Okay, and the other one, NAC-P20, is not this intersection, and we did not advertise properly for that, so we can't do that at this meeting. We will put it on next year's Cobb plan hearing.
That is correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right.
We're doing NAC-P9, removing that.
We're removing it.
But we can't, we can't do NAC-P20 because it wasn't advertised with this packet.
Thank you for clarifying that, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson, did you have a response?
That is accurate.
Oh, okay, I thought I...
Thank you for...
No. I saw you wanting to add in something else. Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? Okay, with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve ZD7 as it has been presented.
Second.
Are there additional comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and I believe we are now moving on to Commissioner proposed comprehensive plan amendments.
All right, thank you. These are commission proposals, and we'll start with CP1-1, and I'm going to skip the district, mentioning the district because the first number that you see in the case, that is the district. So you'll, you'll notice that a lot of these start to start off being CP1, that's District 1, and it's the first case of District 1, and then I'll move into the other districts as we move along, so that'd just help move things along quicker. So CP1-1 is in Commission, or, there I go. CP1-1 proposes to change the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to rural residential. The site is located north and south of Rutledge Road on the west side of Black Acre Trail. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak to CP1-1? Okay, we'll move on.
CP1-2 proposes to change the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to rural residential. The track is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak to CP1-2? Okay.
CP1-3 proposes to change the future land use from rural residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, north of Altery Church Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Is there anyone here to speak to CP1-3? Okay.
CP1-4 proposes to change the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to rural residential. The site is located on the west side of Acworth Dallas Road, south of Cedar Crest Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here for CP1-4? Okay.
CP1-5 proposes to change the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to low-density residential. The site is located on the west side of Acworth Due West Road, south of Cobb Parkway. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, are there any speakers for CP1-5? Okay.
CP1-6 proposes to change the future land use from Community Activity Center to Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the east and west side of Ernest Barrett Parkway, north of Dallas Highway. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here for CP1-6? Okay.
CP1-7 is in, I'm sorry. CP1-7 proposes to change the future land use from Community Activity Center to Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the west side of Barrett Parkway, east of Villa Rickaway, south of Dallas Highway. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, are there any speakers for 1-7? Okay.
CP1-8 proposes to change the future land use from Community Activity Center to Low Density Residential. The site is located on the south side of Dallas Highway, north of Old Dallas Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, are there any speakers? All right.
CP1-9 proposes to change the future land use from Community Activity Center and Park Recreation Conservation to Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the south side of Dallas Highway, east of Lost Mountain Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone here for 1-9? Okay.
CP1-10 proposes to change the future land use from Community Activity Center to Very Low Density Residential and Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, west of Morris Hill Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, anyone here for 1-10? Okay.
CP1-11 proposes a change in the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to Very Low Density Residential. The site is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of the Pauldon County line. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, anyone here for 1-11? Okay.
CP1-12 proposes a change in the future land use from Community Activity Center to Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located near the intersection of Morris Hill Road and Stylesborough Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any speakers for 1-12? All right. Moving on from District 1 to now District 4.
That's correct. CP4-1 proposes a change in the future land use from community activity center to low-density residential. The site is located on the west side of South Cobb Drive at Waldrop Circle. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Are there any speakers for 4-1?
CP4-2 proposes a change in the future land use from the Mabelton Town Center future land use category and subcategory of community activity center and low-density residential to the Mabelton Town Center medium-density residential and medium-density residential. The site is located on the north side of Lyons Club Drive, north of Veterans' Memorial Highway, and west of Glor Drive. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Are there any speakers for 4-2? Okay.
CP4-3 proposes a change in the future land use from community activity center to neighborhood activity center. The site is located on the west side of Mabelton Parkway at the intersection of Felton Lane. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Any speakers for 4-3? Okay.
CP4-4 proposes a change in the future land use from community activity center to neighborhood activity center. The site is located east and west side of Oakdale Road, just north of Veterans Memorial Highway. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Any speakers for 4-4? Okay.
CP4-5 proposes a change in the future land use from community activity center to neighborhood activity center. The site is located on the east and west side of Mabelton Parkway, north and south side of Gresham Road, and south of Old Alabama Road. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Hey, are there any speakers for 4-5? Okay.
4-6 is in Commission District 4 and proposes to change the future land use from community activity center to neighborhood activity center. The site is located at the intersection of Old Powder Springs Road and Old Bankhead Highway. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Are there any speakers for 4-5? Or, excuse me, 4-6? Okay.
CP4-7 proposes a change in the future land use from community activity center to neighborhood activity center and high-density residential. The site is located northeasterly of Riverside Parkway, divided by City View Drive. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Are there any speakers? All right, we can continue.
CP4-8 proposes to change the future land use from priority industrial area to park recreation conservation. The site is located on the east side of Discovery Boulevard, north of Mabelton Parkway. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Are there any speakers for 4-8? Okay.
4-9 proposes to change the future land use from community activity center to medium-density residential. The site is located on the north side of Old Bankhead Highway, east of Old Powder Springs Road. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Any speakers for 4-9? Okay.
CP4-10 proposes to change the future land use from neighborhood activity center to high-density residential. Sorry. Let me repeat that. CP4-10 proposes to change the future land use from neighborhood activity center to high-density residential. The site is located on the south side of Old Powder Springs Road, east of Veterans Memorial Highway. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Are there any speakers? Okay.
CP4-11 proposes to change the future land use from neighborhood activity center to medium-density residential. The site is located on the east side of Wade Road, south of Blair Bridge Road, west of Factory Shoals Road. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Are there any speakers? Okay.
CP4-12 proposes to change the future land use from neighborhood activity center to medium-density residential. The site is located on the south side of Blair Bridge Road, east of Riverside Parkway. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Any speakers for 4-12? Okay.
And our last CP, CP4-13 proposes to change the future land use from priority industrial area to community activity center, medium-density residential, and public institutional. The site is located on the east side of Mabelton Parkway, between Honeycutt Road and Queen Mill Road. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Are there any speakers for 4-13? Okay. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve all of the Commissioner-proposed comprehensive plan amendments, 1-1 all the way through 4-13.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. We are at, finally, the staff-proposed comprehensive plan amendment.
All right. So our last item on the agenda is SP1, and it is simply proposing to add the Economic Development Strategic Plan Initiative to our community work program. The community work program is a five-year action item plan that basically gives list of projects that Cobb intends to undertake over the next five years. It's part of, it's actually a requirement within our comprehensive plan document by the state. And just so that we be, we're consistent with the projects that we undertake, this was not originally in the, when we did our 2022 update, it was not listed as a project. And now that we have an economic development director and division within our community development, we are putting together a strategic plan, and we want to make sure we get it added to our community work program. So that is what this SP1 is about. The Planning Commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak to, ED or SP1? I'm looking at the work item number. Okay, Commissioners, I move that we approve SP1. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I see there's some discussion. We'll start with Commissioner Garmbrill.
So has the Economic Development Department finished their strategic plan?
Have they finished the strategic plan? No, it's just now starting the process. We're in the proposal stage, searching for a consultant.
Okay. So I have a hard time adding a plan that we don't even know what says at this time.
Let me, all right, so I know where you're, what you're saying. This is not part of the supplemental plan section where we add the small-area plans that we conduct. This is part of the community work program where it provides projects that the county intends to undertake. The supplemental plan section that that's part of, that has a list of all the studies and plans that we've conducted and that have been approved, that's within the supplemental plan section. This project is within the community work program that identifies projects that the county intends to undertake over the next five years. For instance, our Department of Transportation has all of their projects, all the SPOS projects, whether they've been complete or not, they're in the next, whatever projects they plan to undertake over the next five years, they're in that community work program. This project will go into the same, but it will be under the economic development umbrella.
So I guess you're looking to add the ED-P1, 5 and 6, is that correct? Or are you just looking to add the ED-11 that says we're going to develop the economic development strategic plan?
I can hardly hear you. Say that again.
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure what you're trying to change here, because again, I'm concerned about saying we're going to add a document that hasn't even been created. While I understand you want to get it put into the comprehensive plan to note that we're doing it, I'm concerned with the develop portion of it, because it's almost like even once it gets developed, it automatically gets put in here, even if it's not approved by the board.
No, it will, all right, so if you look at the chart, I don't know if, is the chart up on the screen? Can we get the chart on their screen? So the plan is to have this complete by 2025. That's the, that's where you see the completion date. Whether it's approved or not, you know, once you go through the process, if it's not approved, then when we report back to the state, we'll say that that we completed this project but wasn't approved. If it is approved, we completed, we will report back to the state that it was approved and that we now have a strategic plan.
Commissioner Richardson, then Burrow, then Sheffield, if you might sway and all.
Just to clarify, thank you. Just to clarify, the only thing we're approving is that this is being conducted. This is a, we, the county has intention to conduct and, or build an economic development strategic plan.
Correct.
This does not say what that plan is. This is just that we have a plan.
Yeah. It, the county intends to undertake this project. There's a lot of projects out there that the county, that's in our work program that may or may not happen.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow.
So this board has already approved the strategic plan for economic development to go to, out to bid for a consultant.
Correct.
It was passed three to two. The county strategic plan has a segment for economic development, which is why I didn't think we needed to hire a consultant to do just economic development when it's already a component of our, the county plan, strategic plan. But so why, is this required by state law that we include this in the work plan?
No, it's not required by state that we include this into our community work program. The Georgia Planning Act or the comprehensive plan rules and policies and procedures require us to have a community work program that lists all the projects that the county intends to undertake. We're just trying to be good stewards of the comprehensive plan in adding projects to that, that community work program that the county intends to undertake.
But we don't know what they are till we go out to bid. Okay.
Well, I mean, that's part of, when we go through our 2022 comprehensive plan update, that's, there's a list of projects within our community work program that, that were listed out within each element. There's a land use, there's a lot of, there's tons of Department of Transportation projects, and most of them are SPOS projects. Parks has SPOS projects. They're all listed within the community work program, the ones that they intend to undertake over the next five years.
Right. But with this consultant, we don't know what the future plans are in addition to what's already in the work program.
This is just stating.
So why wouldn't we wait and do this next year when we, when they've got a project list to update it? I mean...
We're just, we're just letting the community know that the county intends to undertake this project. I mean, we're in the process right now of searching for a consultant. Our economic development director has put out an RFQ. We've received proposals and in the process of finding and identifying a consultant. We're just putting it in here. I mean, it's, if you don't want to add it, that's fine. But we're just letting the community know that we're doing this project, or we intend to undertake this project.
Okay.
That question is a clarification. With the intended project list, are those projects, would those projects have to be approved by the board?
If, if those projects, yes, the, I mean, if, if those projects get started, there will, if there's any type of money involved in those, obviously, we would have to come out before you to get authorized. And then, and then, of course, after the project went through its process and was completed, then we would come back to the board for approval or acceptance or however. Some of these, some of these community work programs are just internal staff projects that don't really require board approval.
Okay.
Research projects. We do, I can tell you just from a land use standpoint, one of our next five-year projects in the land use was updating our, our industrial land inventory. You know, that's, that's sort of a research project internally. But this, this one is, you know, not a, this requires money because of the consultant and all that. But so we're just adding it to...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any addition? Yes. Commissioner Garmbrill?
So I have a follow-up. So help me understand. We, we know we have a consultant working on development economic plan, so we want to put it into our Cobb Plan to show that's happening. Where's the SP to put the UDC in to the Cobb Plan?
It is, actually, it was, it's already in there. It's in the land use section. If you open up...
I don't recall us approving it last year.
It was, it was approved through the five-year update back in 2022.
Okay. Because a lot of the things in the UDC are now going to be conflicting with our Cobb Plan. That's why I'm surprised it's not...
Well, the, the, the item that is listed, the UDC item is basically listed in our community work program as completing a unified development code, or it may even say revising our zoning code. It may, it may not, it may, I can't remember the exact language, but it's just, it's because the county intended to undertake a zoning revision. It was listed at, and over the next five years, so it was, it was added to our community work program back in 2022. I'm not sure of the exact language, but it, it just, it doesn't go into the conflicts of everything. It just talks about how the county intends to undertake this revision.
And it's definitely my recollection is in there, and all of the other key objectives and goals by different departments. For the Economic Development Department, this was one of those key objectives. They said they wanted to do an economic development plan, and they wanted to engage in consultants. Therefore, they brought it to the board to do a plan. So all we're trying to do, from what I understand, is maintain a certain amount of transparency in our comprehensive plan, which the community has access to read, ask questions against, and provide commentary against. But that we're trying to make sure that the actual things that the county is doing is reflected properly in there so that they can know that this is going on and ask those questions.
Correct.
Now, once the actual studies, because there are other studies, right, once the studies are done, all of the reports come back to the board, and any recommendations for any changes or updates would also have to be approved by the board. So I think this is fair in keeping consistent with transparency's sake. This is something that's already been approved. It's something that's already in process. Showing that economic development is doing this is, I think, appropriate.
And I think in the simplest form, it is essentially a to-do list for the county over the next five years. That's, that's, you know, the simplest form to explain it all. That was approved through our 2022 update, but then in this process, because this strategy came along later, and you remember, at the time, there was no economic development. We didn't have an economic development director, so there was not a lot of work or resources involved in economic development. So now that we have that economic development director and we have a team, that's, we're adding the strategic plan that that director wants to move forward with.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burrow and Garmbrill in opposition. This is our final matter to discuss as part of today's meeting. And so with that, I believe our meeting is now adjourned. And thank you, Philip, for viewing your team's work on this matter.
Thank you all for being out here on your meeting day off.
Thank you.